It's five o'clock on Monday, June the sixth, and we want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting, and we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. So if everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb?
Harley.
Here.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Here. Okay, entertain a motion then to approve today's agenda, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, Deb?
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Across the mayor's desk this evening, I'd like to thank Kylie Skow for being our videographer, and at this time, I'd like to congratulate the Bishop Garrigan Girls Golf Team on their third state championship, and they are here with us this afternoon, so with that said, I do have a proclamation that I would like to read and present to you, so if you would like to gather down front with us, and again, if city council members would like to gather on either side, I will present this proclamation. This is a City of Algonah proclamation honoring the Bishop Garrigan State Champion Golf Team. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team leadership of the 2022 Bishop Garrigan Girls Golf Team has enabled these student athletes to earn the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Class 1A State Championship three times in the last four years, and whereas winning the 2022 Class 1A State Championship brought honor to Bishop Garrigan High School, the City of Algonah, and Cassuth County on the local and state level, and whereas coaches Victor Birdy and Stephanie Aylers, as well as all golf team members, parents, and supporters were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rick Murphy, Mayor of Algonah, and the Algonah City Council do hereby recognize and publicly commend the Bishop Garrigan Girls High School Golf Team for their tremendous achievement in winning the Class 1A State Golf Championship this year and for their three-year run as champions dated and signed on the sixth day of June 2022. Congratulations.
Get a quick picture with the mayor in there.
We might, too.
All right.
I'll just join here.
He's there on the end, I'll give you a count of. One, two, three. Nice work, congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Did you enjoy the fun?
Yes, I enjoyed it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nobody wants to stay for me.
Okay, with that then, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, an update from the city's administrator.
All right, to start off, I'd like to introduce our newest employee with the City of Algonah, David Penton. Started last month as the city's new ambulance director, so David, you want to come up and introduce yourself quick to the council and the camera?
Sure, good afternoon, good evening. I'm David Penton, I'm a 2000 grad from Algonah High, really excited to be coming back to EMS. I started my EMS career with the City of Algonah, Algonah EMS in 1999 when I was a junior in high school. I attribute my career to former Mayor Lynn Keek, who was one of my teachers, brought me to Algonah EMS for a ribbon cutting, and I thought, you know what, free cake, I'm going with it. So while I was there, I was introduced to Algonah EMS and the administrators at the time, and they said, hey, we're looking for drivers. So I started my career as an ambulance driver in 99, and to be 100% honest, I would have dropped out of high school except for my love for EMS, so I did end up graduating in 2000 and have hopped around a little bit in the EMS profession, public safety, with a year hiatus working at Divine Mercy Parish and Saint's, or, excuse me, Bishop Garrigan, so really excited to have had that opportunity and to be back with all of you and serving the citizens of Algonah and Cassuth County.
Thanks, Dave, welcome.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Yep.
The also other events, one of my folks of the Community Visioning Design Workshop that we'll be hosting on their Carnegie lawn here on Wednesday from four to seven, that will be coinciding with the party in the park, so that'll be an opportunity, there'll be some boards and some input materials there, if residents want to identify ways to improve the transportation or beautification of the community based on the feedback that we've gotten from some of the public input that we've done, as well as our steering committee, react to that and provide their ideas as we work through this community visioning process, so encourage folks to stop by and check that out. And then also with the sun and all the rain we've gotten, things have been growing very fast, especially lawns, so just want to remind folks that the city ordinance regarding lawns is no greater than eight inches. Just this last week alone, we sent out more than 20 notices regarding the length of grass, so we don't enjoy doing that or having to escalate defines or mowing it ourselves, so with the temps that we have, remind people to stay on top of that. And then finally, with the McCoy Street reconstruction project going on, that entire section of street now, so from Highway 18 to Poplar Street is now closed, and that Poplar Street intersection will remain closed until Phase One construction is done, which is those southern three blocks of the project, and that's expected to be finished sometime in August.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to speak? Not seeing anyone. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Eight, that's consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from the May 16 council meeting, approve the minutes that are to be paid this cycle, approve the various cigarette permit applications, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Jody, any discussion? Vote, please, Deb?
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is a public hearing, and it's 5:09, we'll open that public hearing, and this is regarding the landscape shed special exception.
This is a public hearing regarding a proposed special exception to be added to the RS and RM, so that's residential single-family and residential multifamily zoning districts. The landscape shed special exception would permit for a shed to be placed on a vacant lot, up to 120 square feet shed could be, not connected to utilities, in those districts being granted approval by the Board of Adjustment. Since the notice was published, I've not received any comments from the public regarding.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak?
Yeah, we live mayor.
Okay, if you'd like to come up to the podium and introduce yourself and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pete Garry, Mayor of Algonah, and we have that vacant lot on Dusman Grigor, and we are just curious on how you came up with these measurements. Few years ago, a portable building was okay, and then just recently, a 20 by 20 building was okay. Now you're saying that 10 by 12 is what you're going to recommend. I would assume most of you guys know how big a 10 by 12 is, probably put a few shovels in there, maybe a small more. I guess, so what is your consensus, and how did you guys come up with that size? I guess that's what we would kind of...
This went to planning and zoning. That was a recommendation from planning and zoning, that it not be more than 10 by 12. Their concern was if it got larger, we were going to start seeing just storage sheds put on empty lots, and that is not the intent of this landscape shed. If the council should decide it needs to be bigger, that is it right? This was the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And that was at a meeting you guys had some time ago, I would assume?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Well, I know there's a lot of sheds around town, everybody's aware of that. A shed right to the west of us, it's a 12 by 18, that seems to be a more sensible size. I mean, we have a mill that we water our garden with, it would be more available for that. And there's a lot of sheds around town, too, I know you guys have different ordinances, variances for that, I'm not sure about all that stuff. I mean, what is the purpose of that lot if we can't do something with it, a little portable shed? I mean, should that be taxed?
Just to clarify, so what this proposed ordinance is looking at is sheds on undeveloped lots, so it has no impact if you already have a house on a...
There was a house on there, I'm sure you guys are aware of that.
So if you already have a house on the lot, this doesn't pertain to that. In the, in terms of what's allowed as a permitted use in district zone RS and RM, the intent is that those would be for residential development, and that's what you're permitted to put there. Not storage buildings, not just random garages, and so we're trying to find a balance of recognizing that there's vacant lots that folks might want something on site to keep tools and equipment to help maintain that lot, but doing so in a way that is consistent with what the intended and permitted uses of are that district, because right now, a shed is considered an accessory structure, so by definition, you can't have an accessory structure unless you have a primary structure. So this would allow a, you know, a shed under these parameters to be placed on a vacant lot without that primary structure.
I guess, you know, we're trying to do our best. If, I don't know if you know the history of that lot, but the city allowed the previous owner to put fill in there that wasn't fill. I mean, we pulled out a mattress from underneath our house, so, you know, we were put in a position because whoever was working for the city at that time did not do their job. So we're against the wall here. We had to move our house, I mean, where we're at is a very nice location, but we have an empty lot, and what were we supposed to do with it? What were we supposed to do with it that it made it appealing? Because it's coming right into Algonah there on Van Verderen Street. How are you going to make a lot like that look appealing, to make, you know, Algonah look appealing? We could have just let the lot go trash, but we are trying our best, and we're just asking for a lot, or to honor a lot, to have a shed that, you know, is reasonable for us to put the needed supplies we need for our garden, because I don't know, we asked the question already, you know, what purpose does this lot have?
So you're going, what purpose does it have? Should it be taxed if there's no...
For future residential development, or...
It can be.
Well, you can, there's too much junk underneath it. We took soil samples, and you can go down 15 feet.
We can show you.
It's not feasible to put, you know, like a garage, you know, you really can't go very deep without finding junk, you know, so...
We were told that if we built on it, that would be fine, because we know what, you know, could happen with the consequences, but for us to sell it to anybody, they cannot build on it. So basically, we can only take and put a shed there where, you know...
Floating slab would probably work, you know, I mean, it's settled for, you know, quite a few years now, since we moved in in 03.
And this is an ordinance that...
You say this ordinance doesn't pertain just to your lot.
Yeah.
This is city ordinance, and that's what we have to look at. And, you know, so I think we are trying to help and find a balance, but we're trying to figure out what it is.
On that note, planning and zoning was also concerned, if we went bigger than 120 square foot, it would, we were going to start allowing garages, you know, something to store an extra car in, and they do not want that. They want to have wires to be able to store...
What was wrong with a nice garage, city?
But they do not want the sheds in this to be big enough to, for a storage facility or to store a vehicle or anything like that, and that was their reasoning of 120 square feet. But the thing is, we probably want a door big enough to put a big car in. I mean, that was not our intention.
We talked about that previously.
As the council said, this isn't directed only to you, it's the city-wide...
I understand rules and regulations are put in force for a reason, you know, but there's always exceptions to, when you see the Supreme Court, they've got exceptions too, so I don't know whether a little 10 by 12 shed look okay on that big lot. I mean, coming into Algonah with a little portable shed, is that what you're saying? Do you want us to put a portable shed, or, I mean, a floating slab?
The shed has to be portable, no utilities to it, so if you guys whenever sell the property, the special exception, if it's approved by Board of Adjustment, will go away, so then the shed would have to go away. Can I say that again, please? This is stating, in order to have a shed on an empty lot, it has to be portable, with no utilities to it, 120 square feet, and you have to go to Board of Adjustment, ask for a special exception to put that shed there. That way, if you would sell the lot, the special exception goes with the owner, so if you sell the lot, that special exception is no longer valid, the shed would have to be moved.
If it wasn't portable, is that what you're saying?
It has to be portable. It can't be moved if it's not portable. So if and when we sell it, that we have to sell off the shed also. The shed would have to be moved from above the lot, what if so?
Special exceptions go with the owner of the property, so, you know, there could be something where if you're...
You could work something with it.
Have consideration where they could do a petition to the Board of Adjustments of the intent, you know, and have that approval, but again, that's getting very specific circumstances that aren't what this ordinance is dealing with.
And if the council would move forward with 120 square feet, you have to go before the Board of Adjustment before you can put the shed there and give the special exception permit. At that time, you can also ask for a variance in the size of the shed. If you are trying to...
I don't see my question. So we have to start over again?
Yeah, are we going backwards? No, you have to...
Initially, we were going to have a variance, and then you said, no, a variance isn't going to work, and you said, we have to change your ordinance, no, it's not going to work, and you said a 20 by 20 would be the minimum size, and you said, no...
I don't recall ever sitting 20 by 20 with a minimum size.
Well, you did, and I was with...
We said, you know, to go with our planning and zoning. For their decisions.
Whatever. I was there, you were there, so, I mean, we got in our notes also.
Yeah, in our building permit, we actually set a 12 by 28. I understand that. But when we refer this to planning and zoning, because it's a zoning code change, this is the recommendation that planning and zoning is bringing to the city council.
How big are you guys wanting to go?
Well, you know, our neighbor has a 12 by 18. I mean, we'd like to have something that looks presentable, I mean, if we want to sit there for a couple hours, you know, while we're working on the yard and stuff, but, yeah, I don't know.
So what Barb is saying though is if we pass this even to the 10 by 12 or 120 square foot...
We have to go variance again.
But at least the shed ordinance is passed at that point. We're not going back to this part. You then have to go and do the special, ask the planning and zoning, can we put a 12 by 18, and it would be their, their decision to make a recommendation, or their...
We already did that already.
But your first amendment was not allowed at all.
We, yeah, we didn't have the shed ordinance at all then. We didn't have this ordinance yet at all.
Went from a board, yeah.
Yeah, so we're starting with this ordinance, and then...
We have to start over again, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I guess...
But you're one step closer, because now we have this...
150 bucks probably, or something like that.
I don't know what that stuff costs, I honestly don't.
The Board of Adjustment, we paid 150...
Okay, I don't know what that cost, but...
It was back in October.
The Board of Adjustment, that was an appeal on the interpret, administrative appeal on the interpretation of the city zoning ordinance and how it's applied and that accessory buildings aren't allowed, so it wasn't a variance or an exception for a shed, it was an appeal on the interpretation, which the Board of Adjustment upheld the interpretation that accessory structures aren't allowed without a primary, so that's what was appealed. So that was with the Board of Adjustment, because by definition, the shed can otherwise exist, and so that's what prompted the Board of Adjustment at that time, then directed, approved a motion directing, I don't remember the exact word, but basically looking at what can we do as a alternative to accommodate a reasonable, you know, reasonably accommodate their request and intent with looking out for the public purpose and interest, and so that's what prompted the referral of NP and Z and this whole process.
NP and Z recommended a 10 by 12.
120 square foot, not 150.
We just...
120 square feet.
So we could go 50 foot high, would that be a house? 10 square feet, I assume, wouldn't be...
So you're looking at floor area, your height, that would be subject to same as the current zoning district regulations, which I think are 60 feet or two and a half stories.
There's actually one building throughout town that are, I would say an eyesight, but, I mean, you guys allowed that to happen, but, so, yeah. Okay.
Okay, very good. You betcha, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 5:23, and we'll close that public hearing then, and we'll move on to new business, Agenda Item Number 10, and this is the third reading of an ordinance concerning no parking areas and temporary stop signs.
This ordinance makes several changes to the temporary school zone stop signs and parking proximity to stop signs within school loading areas. It removes the current portable stop signs in proximity to Obi Lane, as that's no longer school, then approves additional stop signs at various locations in proximity of going to schools, as well as areas of no parking in relation to those, no park, or in relation to those stop signs to have appropriate distance and line of sight. If there's any specific questions, go through those.
Move to waive the third reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the third reading, any discussion? Hearing unvoted, please, Deb?
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, move to tapped.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney to adopt this ordinance, any discussion? Hearing unvoted, please, Deb?
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number 11, this is the second reading of an ordinance repealing bicycle licensing.
This ordinance repeals our section of, Chapter 1056, specifically Article 1, which currently technically requires all residents to obtain a bicycle license from the chief of police before using a bicycle within city limits, and has long been unenforced if it ever was, so this ordinance simply appeals that, so it's somewhere around the books.
Move to waive the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Tyler, a second from Don to waive the second reading, any discussion? Hearing unvoted, please, Deb?
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to approve second reading.
Second.
Motion from Tyler, a second from Don to approve the second reading, any discussion? Hearing unvoted, please, Deb?
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 12 is a first reading of an ordinance concerning landscape shed special exception.
This is the ordinance which we previously had the public hearing on, this would permit a landscape shed which is defined as a portable structure, 120 square feet or less, which has no utilities to be placed on a residential, single-family or residential multifamily zoned lot upon being granted a special assessment by the Board of Adjustment.
Make a motion, we waive the first reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody to waive the first reading, any discussion? Hearing unvoted, please, Deb?
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Just a quick, I mean, next time, I mean, is there a way we can do the second and third? I think some of the frustration we heard in the public hearing is the length it's taken to get to this point even, for them to, somebody to put a shed on the lot, I don't know, I'm just asking. We'll have to talk about that, but if that's a possibility, next time you do the second and third, move forward with it quicker so they can get to a point and maybe lose some of the frustration, I think it would help.
Certainly can do that.
Okay.
If that's the direction, like the proceedable plan, we'll have a second and third on the next meeting.
Think it would help, at least.
Okay. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 13, this is a resolution setting wages and benefits for city employees and officials.
This is the annual salary and benefit resolution for the city, which sets wages for city positions for the upcoming fiscal year, which runs from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. The changes are based on recommendations from the Ways and Means Committee, as well as in accordance with the Public Works Union contracts and what's obligated from that.
Move to approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from, oh, Rodney? Okay, any discussion? Hearing unvoted, please, Deb?
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number 14 is a resolution approving amendments to personnel policies.
As far as the conversations that we have with Ways and Means on adjusting some of our personnel policies, this repeals free policies and replaces them. The first is workers' compensation policy. This places the language we currently have regarding people unable to work, this is the same language as in the current union agreement. The second set updates the vacation leave policy. Right now, technically do not suppose to earn any vacation, 40 hours after an entire year, then 80 hours after 24 months of employment, just given the, how tight the labor market You know, and, and, um, having that work-life balance. We're recommending, uh, bumping up that front end, um, a bit more so they would, uh, this would allow, um, for twenty hours to be awarded after three months, twenty hours to be awarded after six months. And then any of that time awarded, a vacation time awarded in the first year if an employee were to leave, uh, within that year, um, they wouldn't be able to be paid out and that time can't be rolled over to the, uh, uh, second year. And then after twelve months, it would start employees at eighty hours a year. It also has some exceptions in there, gives the city administrative the authority, um, to grant, um, an exception to extend, um, additional vacation time to be rolled over. Currently, our policy allows for the forty hours to be rolled over. We've got a few, um, circumstances where, where the employee's anniversary date hits and kind of when the busiest time of the year lineup. You know, they'll hold on to some of their vacation because they, you know, don't know if and when they might need it. And then they come to the end of the year and need to burn it. So in particular circumstances, this would allow the authority to grant additional time to be rolled over. Another example would be, um, you know, if there's a significant project going on that that person really just, they couldn't, you know, be taken away for something, um, for, for an extended period of time. You know, that would be another consideration. And that also allows for discretion in terms of unemployment offers of, of vacation. Looking comprehensively at the candidate experience, what they might be bringing in terms of where their current employee, uh, level is, um, as well. And then finally, on the holidays, it adds, um, a half-day holiday on Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth. This has been a, um, date, either a half-day or a full day, has been granted by city council. Probably close to a decade plus, more. So rather than every November, December, doing a special motion to approve that, we would just formalize that. That's a half-day on December twenty-fourth. You know, if the rule of the council is to, to grant more than that, um, seasonally, you know, that still could be considered, but if it's, you know, kind of part of our operating procedure and what people anticipate, rather than us just get it on the books then. So those are the, uh, three, a summary of the three proposed changes.
Any feedback? Have you taught employees looked at this, your current ones? Are they able to go out after we approve it? Or how's it planned?
It'll, it'll go out, uh, after it's approved.
Okay.
You know, really, it's, it's nothing that, they're all too.
Yeah.
The benefit of.
Sure.
Motion to approve resolution.
I'll second.
A motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Any other discussion?
I don't know. I think maybe, uh, changing and adding that half a day, um, probably should be referred to as the Howard Esser amendment because I know when I started, Paul was around, uh, Howard every year would request that and the council would approve it and it's been done ever since. So, uh, it's, I, I believe he was probably the one who came up with it before my time.
I didn't know we had that history of tradition.
There is.
Okay, so let's see. We have a motion and a second. And any other discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Maybe an apology to Howard here or something. Okay. Agenda item number fifteen that pertains to, um, fireworks permit for Iowa Fireworks Company.
Iowa Fireworks Company has submitted a permit to sell fireworks, um, at two eleven Highway eighteen, Sacrum's truck stop, from June tenth through July tenth.
Move to approve the permit.
Second.
A motion from Tyler, a second from Don to approve this permit. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen also pertains to a fireworks sales permit, uh, for Bolino Fireworks.
Bolino Fireworks is requesting permit to sell fireworks, um, at fifteen hundred Highway one sixty-nine north, otherwise at High Street Parking Lot, um, and their, uh, sale period would run from June eighteenth through July eighth.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Don, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number seventeen is to consider, uh, property tax exemptions.
We received two urban revitalization applications for residential new construction, one at one seventeen Diamond Drive and the other at five thirteen Eastland Circle. Recommend approval.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Jody to approve these two applications. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried and we wish these two families well in their new homes. Agenda item number eighteen, uh, concerns changing the date for our first council meeting in July.
So the first Monday in July is July fourth, um, which city offices will be closed that day, uh, for the holiday. So we need to set an alternate times. Recommended we hold it on Tuesday, July fifth at five P M. If that would work for everyone.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Nobody wants to come on the Fourth of July, huh? Okay, we'll have a vote.
Well.
Tyler.
Good.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler. Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number nineteen, this is the final notice and future appointment to the Retail Revolving Loan Fund Committee. I have visited with Bob Harrington. This is a mayoral appointment. I have visited with Bob Harrington, who's the new chief financial officer for AMU and asked him if he would like to fill in the, the remainder of Sandy Bass term. And he said, yes, that term expires the thirtieth of September, two thousand twenty-three. So I would entertain a motion to, um, appoint Bob Harrington.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Well, uh, motion carried. Thank you. And, uh, Bob, we look forward to working with you on this committee. So agenda item number twenty, this is a, uh, final notice and future appointment of the Board of Adjustment. This would be, uh, to fulfill Mike Denny's, uh, term and this is a council appointment. Do we have any names come forward?
I do not yet.
Nothing yet? Okay. Agenda item number twenty-one, this is the first notification, terms expiring and future appointments, uh, Library Board of Trustees. There are three terms that are expiring and this also is a mayoral appointment. So, uh, yeah, this is, we have three, uh, terms expiring and, and this is the first notification of that. So, and agenda item number twenty-two, this is the first notification, terms expiring and future appointment of the Tree Committee. Uh, Jeremy, Jeremy Prothman's term on the Tree Board expires the thirtieth of June. And this is just, uh, the first notification as well. So agenda item number twenty-three is discussion on capital projects.
All right. Um, with all the projects we have going on in the works, we're about to begin a planning. Just wanted to provide some updates and then answer any, uh, questions or just that discussion on, on various items. So real quick, um, on the Teets Park Shelter House, um, we had a couple of meetings with the project architect last month to, um, identify punch list items to be addressed, um, for the project to complete. Sand construction started working on that again. Um, they've power washed the outside. What they're working, working on right now is trying to get a consistent, um, uh, color. Just trying to avoid the, you know, it's not a, it's not opaque and not, you know, it has different variations in it, but, but just kind of blotchy areas. So get that consistent. And then they will be bringing in a contractor, NACCO, which is a specialty, uh, concrete stain and seal company that they'll be coming in to stain it to get a, the uniform look and, uh, back closer to a version of, uh, the block material that, um, we originally, um, intended, you know, for appearances. And then they're also replacing a number of blocks that were chipped, um, or were out of plumb, um, or needed to be top pointed otherwise. And so that, that works continuing. Hopefully that, you know, will finish up here, um, in the next month. But, uh, we'll see how, how that progresses. Any question on Teets at all?
How's the rest of the project coming? Um, inside the building, is that complete?
Um, inside, they're doing some additional block work as well, um, replacing some kind of same issues that we pointed out on the exterior. And the, the, but the toilet sinks, those are all installed, the, the countertops are installed, the floor, um, has been done. They still some work on some of the window trim, um, and then just kind of small items that were identified as a punch list that need to be worked on yet.
I guess the ultimate question is, somebody says they have a family reunion coming up this summer. When can I book it?
I don't have a good answer for you yet. Um, you know, we had originally anticipated that the project would be available in the spring. I know all of us, all, all the parties involved are looking forward to this project being completed because it's gone much longer. But it'll just be a, a matter of the reviewing the work and determining when it's acceptable or what else still has to be corrected or redone.
I was there a couple of weeks back, or maybe just a week ago now, and there was water standing. Like you could tell it was inside and there was some water in the doorway on the east side. Is that because they were power washing the inside too, or do we have a drainage issue?
We have had some issues with water on the inside. Um, the plan for that, um, I believe, just, I'm not familiar with the particular conversation between the architect and the contractor, but what was identified on the punch list is to, um, remove those doors, cut that concrete, put a, um, thermal barrier and flashing there. So that would stop the water from entering the building. So that was what was generally what was identified on the punch list, whether or not there is some additional back and forth and what that will be done, exactly how, but that's been identified as an issue that needs to be addressed.
It's just the project never ends, never ending by the way it looks at this point, but yeah, hopefully it will.
Yeah, uh, we don't have an exact date yet set on when we're going to have our next construction meeting, but we're hoping it will be here the next week or two so we can reassess where we're at on the punch list and what still needs to, to be done, get an updated timeline. You know, I'd like to say we'd be, um, up and it'd be available, you know, in July. I, this project was supposed to be done December first, so, um, I just don't want to make that commitment yet, but hopefully, I mean, yeah, this summer.
Any other project updates you?
Um, yeah, uh, Central Park, um, Skate Park. Did get some draft construction drawings and we had a meeting with Spawn Ranch, um, design team a week ago, or two weeks ago. And then last week, we had a, um, a brief public input meeting that I hosted at Busher Brothers since they now have a skateboard shop element in there. Thought it'd be a good way to, um, identify some users. So we got some comments back on that, um, that we relayed on Spawn and just some of the layout on items. So we're hoping later this week we'll have an updated cost estimate to us as well as going over some of those, um, tweaks. Just kind of in general, excuse my very rudimentary word as a, uh, planning tool. Just talked about incorporating the benches, um, in the construction documents that weren't currently in there, but, um, kind of adding some features where they, these benches would be designed that they could be skated on, um, but keeping them in a separated in a way that skaters could use them and they don't feel like they're interfering with walkers and vice versa. So we've looked at some different layout options. But this is just kind of, you know, city staff, our, our comments. We haven't, um, heard anything back from Spawn yet on, on their ideas for these, but, um, this is kind of what we're up for. So in these draft construction documents, the benches aren't in there yet, um, so we're going to try to incorporate those back in.
Okay, now I think what I'm seeing there is that bowl, the bottom part of that bowl is the same level as the flat part coming out of it.
So the, the elevation of.
No, the bottom part.
Yes.
That's the same level as what's coming out. Okay, what, my question is, coming off of the Teets Park discussion, one of the things I didn't like to see is out in the patio area where there seems to be little areas of water pooling. I mean, if I would have poured that cement, I would have put a little slope on it so that you wouldn't have water pooling on it. Because in winter time, that makes slippery spots, icy spots. I, I just don't know, when do you address the engineer and say, we want to make sure that there are no ice pooling spots when this project is done? I mean, probably should have said that when the Teets Park one started. I just want to make sure that this isn't the next one where we have that situation.
Yeah, no, I, I, I echo your frustrations with the Teets Park one. On these, um, I know it's a different construction method in that it's all reinforced concrete, and the rebar and the mesh they have going through it and the mix, it's, you know, specifically built to be able to slope and stand because cracks where skaters are, it's a very bad thing. And they, you know, built a number of these in Iowa and Minnesota. And so I'm confident that their, their method will work and that'll be, um, you know, diligent onsite construction management, which will be overseen by Boltland Mink, um, as our, you know, basically our representative on our behalf to make sure that how it's being poured and how it's being finished is indeed, um, correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that whole picture up there is tipped just a little bit. So that all the water runs off of it.
And I know we've got some, talked about just some additional considerations for slope. So if there is some variation, but I don't know, is there a, so this is. So right now it's draining two ways. Majority of it's coming shaded this way and some of it will shed to the north.
So any water that's in the bowl, then there's no drainage for that?
Correct. That's all angled in a way that it will shed out. We had discussed if we need to put some sort of drain in the bottom or anything like that, but with the elevations and the way it's, it's going to be designed, it will all, it will all flow out.
Oh, okay. Very good.
That was one thing that would potentially be an option, just on how deep that ended up being, um, but how it's designed with the elevations, the consensus between Spawn and Boltland's, that won't be necessary.
Okay, good.
Um, and then at Central, uh, the foul field fence is now up and the foul poles are in and the fence topper, um, on. We did send a notice out to all, uh, baseball and softball teams, um, just very shortly after that fence was done being installed, there's about seventy feet that some team or some group of folks decided to hit soft toss into, um, and damaged the fence. So we let them know that absolutely do not use soft toss up against this fence. Having signs made to put that on there and then directing them if they're going to do that, you know, do it on the batting cage, um, not the fence. Whether or not we replace those sections, they're in the, the left field area. For now, we're going to let's just keep it as is in case we have to make another reminder. For now, we're going to let's just keep it as is in case we have to make another reminder before we replace the section, but I think we'll probably ultimately end up wanting to replace that just with a brand-new fence, brand-new part. It was really frustrating to see that, and that was part of the problem of the condition that we had with the previous fences, like especially behind the backstop, it's just years of soft toss, just, I mean, just worked and destroyed it. So that's something we're going to be very diligent on, and like, there's zero, zero room for that. We have a batting cage facility, that's what that's for.
I think you may have to do something because you're going to have visiting teams that will do it, and they won't know, I'm just saying.
Well, that's why we're going to do the signs, and then I also know Nick's been looking at, there's some like kind of pop-up tents or mesh things that you can set up for soft toss, getting some of those, because I mean, you can't not do soft toss when you're practicing baseball. And so getting those and or looking at if another option maybe be stopping next year's bags with wiffle balls that they could use, drawback with that is, well, are we going to end up actually encouraging folks to do it? You know, if they use it with wiffle balls and, oh, we don't have wiffle balls, say we'll just do regular. That's going to cause problems, but we're looking at some nets and things like that, so there is an alternative for that practice. And then just quick, the skate park will hopefully have final design here later this month. Approve that, and then we're looking at constructing, construction period here in August and September. The library, they have gone now, we're on our third revision of the exterior. This is an updated rendering. The, have a, this latest proposal is going to be discussed at the library board meeting here later this week, depending on the direction that comes out of that meeting, we'll be looking to have a, says a discussion and possible action item on approving an updated design and construction along the exterior for the library. So this design, it still maintains those, you know, the overhang and the translucent panels that we could use, you know, with L E D lighting behind them, and then some variation there to break it up. And the plans of doing is, these would actually be open areas, and then these would be glass. And so it will provide protection from the elements, but also in a way that if it rains snow, it can, you know, this doesn't show up, but there's kind of like some, I mean, larger than wheat poles at the bottom there. There's a lot of how wind behaves and creating a wind tunnel and weather, and then just how that, you know, the sun, how that's going to heat it up, there's a lot of different things going into that. So this is kind of the version that they came up with, that we meet our goals of having a protected overhang, but doing so in a way that wouldn't require conditioned space. So the library board is going to be discussing this latest proposal here on Wednesday after the meeting, and then we'll, depending on their direction from that, we'll bring it back to council. And the architect could do a much better job of articulating all the elements of this design than I could not do it justice, but it's very impressive what kind of explains it and the intent of how it will function. And then, along the other end I have left is just on street projects. McCoy Street, as you mentioned, is now closed through Poplar Street, so the detour to get to Garrigan, you'll have to take Finn now. And then, I reckon, we've had some discussions with the project management on the detour at on McCoy and maintaining that, so at our construction meeting tomorrow, we'll be talking about just making sure that McCoy Street Crossing is rocked and in good shape for the detour traffic. It's pretty rough right now. The stormwater work on Pine Street is continuing this week, and then probably moving into Phillips within the next couple of weeks. And then the Call Street, Moore Street Parking Lot, that timeline's too yet to be determined how it progresses on these two elements of the project will really dictate when that one's going to be ready to go. So that's all I have in terms of updates and happy to have any questions or concerns.
Do they have anything?
We know where to find you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our published agenda, it's five fifty-six, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn the council meeting today.
That's a move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.